Good evening, everyone. We want to thank you for coming this evening for February 22nd, Spotsylvania County School Board Meeting. Before we begin the meeting, I want to take a moment to address a very sad issue that has occurred in our county. We lost a most valued employee. And so it's with much sadness that I share that one of our employees recently passed away. Mr. Raymond Blalock, teacher at Spotsylvania Middle School and an employee for more than 20 years, passed away on February 18th, 2016. Mr. Blalock, I had an opportunity to know as a coach and also as a friend. He was a...he helped out coaching in football, and he coached my son in both football and wrestling. And he is going to be greatly missed. So if you would please join me and the other board members in a moment of silence in honor of Mr. Blalock. He touched the lives of many of us and will be missed tremendously. Moving on to, we have a quorum that's established. I'd like to ask that if you have cell phones, if you would please turn them down or turn them off so there won't be a disruption to the meeting. We want to thank Sergeant Clark in the back of the room from Spotsylvania County Sheriff's Department for being in place. And with that being said, we'd ask for the Assembly to please rise for Mr. Twig to lead us in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We have our agenda in front of us, and we'd like to have a motion to adopt the agenda. Move by Ms. Blalock, do we have a second? Second by Ms. Shelley. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposes? Hearing none. Motion carries seven zero. We do not have a public hearing this evening, so we'll move on to 3.01. Creative art for preschool children. Ms. Flannard.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Dr. Baker and Dr. Martin. This evening, we're going to talk a little bit about preschool art. For preschool art, it is the process of creating, exploring, and discovering, and experimenting that has great value for our young children. The process of art experience becomes the most valuable, not the actual completed project. Process art, combined with intentional adult-child interaction, allows children to contribute to their learning in all domains of development. When any student contributes to their learning, more authentic gains are realized. When a child has access to process art, they discover mystery, creativity, joy, and yes, even frustration. The preschool child uses a complex cognitive process to create their imagined final result. Tonight, preschool staff are here to share their teaching and learning methods, highlighting that in a preschool classroom. Art is a process and not a product. And tonight, we have Dawn Miller, Head Start Director, here to lead our highlight and to introduce our special guests.
Good evening, Chairman Braswell, members of the board, Dr. Baker, Dr. Martin. From the walls of the Children's Museum of Richmond, right here in Fredericksburg, it says, "Art teaches children that a problem may have more than one answer. Instead of following directions, the child's brain becomes engaged in the discovery of how and why. When experimenting with art materials, children are solving challenges and creating new ways to handle unexpected outcomes." That quote is the essence of "it's the process, not the product." We are here this evening to share with you that as early childhood educators, we significantly changed our teaching and learning to better support authentic learning for our youngest learners. This change was facilitated through what some of you would call trash. The fundamental belief of process art is that providing an abundance of interesting materials and then watching and supporting what a child can accomplish on their own is far more beneficial than a child copying the very same thing. Early educators must ask ourselves, should the goal of art be copying a perfect piece? Or should art be an avenue for children to contribute to their own learning? As we began our teaching careers with the adorable teacher-planned art product, we thought they looked fabulous inside and outside our classrooms. This bear is a real sampling of what I did before we changed our learning, teaching and learning. This product was about what I liked. It did not include what the children may have liked. I definitely limited the type of learning that could have taken place. This bear didn't allow for self-expression, imagination, nor creativity, which naturally develops children's skills. This art product only offered a right and wrong way to proceed. There was no difference in texture, no difference in the bear's expression, no difference in the color of the bear, not even the color of his eyes. There was no opportunity to discover what these materials could really create. Certainly, children learned to follow directions and even develop hand-eye coordination, but did it help children compare and experiment with materials, develop problem-solving skills, allow imagination or innovation? Our conversation and missed opportunities for rich vocabulary ended when we said, "We made bears." The ultimate problem is that product art becomes a lost opportunity for children to make connections and contribute to their learning. When children connect relationships to what they are learning, they establish lifelong skills for success. In our classrooms today, we don't have adult-made models to copy anymore. We offer a multitude of materials that introduce new problems to solve and new challenges to stimulate creative thinking. Each art material or piece of trash provides skill development and in turn, a potential for new discoveries. Children are natural explorers who are forever curious about the world around them. This propels them to figure out how things work. When children are encouraged to create and answer their own construction ideas, the knowledge becomes concrete and remains with them. Process art requires them to make independent decisions to create what they envision, which encompasses what they are thinking and feeling. Even if a child does not complete a piece, learning takes place. Our teachers allow children to continually add to their creations. It is never a one-time, whole-group, sitting-down art product. The art pieces remain in progress, so children can complete them when their vision is complete. If we want our children to thrive in the future, they will be best equipped if they think for themselves. As you take a look at the process art in front of you, I'd like for you to look and see about what complex cognitive process children had to use to create that imagined final result. There were no models created for any of those pieces. And looking at the pieces in front of you, let's think about the planning, the problem-solving, the critical thinking, the adaptation, and perseverance it took to make each piece. Just imagine as they were creating, how it contributed to their own learning. Adults may not know what the child is creating, but the child knows exactly what they are making. And when they complete it, they will share every bit of that success, and they will build vocabulary and self-esteem. Chairman Braswell, if you would take a close look at your telescopes? The child at Wilderness Head Start ran out of toilet paper rolls. She exclaimed to her teacher that she couldn't find any more toilet paper rolls, so she found a paper plate, and she said, "It rolled up just fine, so I can make another telescope." Ms. Shelley, if you would lift up Moose Man from Livingston Head Start and tap on the front a little bit, this child said that Moose Man can say yes and no. And Ms. Blalock, that cat is still in progress. That Riverview Head Start child, we have promised her that it is just on loan and will be back in the classroom tomorrow. Mrs. Melissa Brick is here with us tonight to share her classroom's ongoing experience with process art. As you will hear, Mrs. Brick excels at providing the adult-child interaction to build extensive, meaningful vocabulary, as she invites children to experience the freedom to create each and every day.
Thank you. As Mrs. Miller said, years ago, we were all doing product art. The children would complete the art, and we would hang it in the hallway, and often it was forgotten by the children. Now that we focus on the process of art, the children do not forget about their art. Their creations are proudly displayed in our art gallery. They may be taken home to be given to the person that they made it for. They may also be played with in our classroom. With that said, I would like to introduce you to Rocky. Rocky is our class puppy. She began with an egg carton and four toilet paper rolls. My student in the class started this in October. She has been adding to this puppy since then. This puppy has been altered, but it has stayed our puppy, Rocky. She has shared...the creator of Rocky has shared this with her classmates. They have tried...made several different homes for Rocky using various different blocks. They have had to babysit Rocky while that child was busy. They feed Rocky, and of course, the food that they make, they go over to the art area and make food for her. Rocky is definitely what process art is all about, and I have promised that Rocky will return to the classroom tomorrow and stay safe until she returns. Rocky is also an excellent avenue for the children to build their vocabulary as they're talking to each other and us. In order for process art to work in my classroom, two things must happen at the beginning of the year. First, I explain this process to my parents. They need to understand what their child is doing and why they are doing it. Once they understand this, they are great with sending things like Ms. Miller just showed you. And when a child brings this material in in their bookbag, they pull it out, "Ms. Brick, I brought toilet paper rolls today, and we're going to make another Rocky." Or they are so excited and happy to share those materials. They use them themselves. They also share them with their friends. They are happy to do that. The next thing that has to happen is I do help the students learn how to use the art materials in our classroom. It's not a free-for-all. They don't go over there and throw paint and do things like that. They are taught how to use the materials, how to store the materials, and things like that. We also brainstorm with them at the beginning of the year especially. What can they make with these materials? How can you make it? We start that thinking process then, and the kids take it from there. Once both my students and parents are on board, the fun definitely begins. Part of our day is spent in what we call choice time. During choice time, children often decide to go to art, and I cannot limit the number of children that go over there because it's most. When they decide to go to art, they decide what they're going to make, they decide how they're going to make it, what they're going to use. There is no right or wrong. They're free to explore, try new things, help each other, express themselves. If a student doesn't complete their artwork, they are welcome to keep it in the classroom and continue tomorrow. And many, as Rocky shows, work on it over a period of months. My job during this is to be the facilitator. I do not tell the kids what to make or how to make it. I'm there to listen, to help them plan what to do, to help them with their thought process of solving a problem. It's their creation, not mine. When the focus is on the process, there is an amazing amount of learning going on. Each child is in control of their own learning. They're making connections to daily life. When a child wants to make a card or a present for a sibling or parent's birthday, that gives them the incentive to write their name. They want to write "love." They want to write "to mom." They learn how to spell. They're writing. There's a reason why they want to do that. There's a purpose. It's their purpose. So once they make that, they take it home. There are many language and literacy opportunities, as I just said, with the writing. They're talking to each other about what they're doing, how they're going to do it. They're talking about what they're making as they're making it. They're learning new vocabulary as they create, often from each other. They're learning that print has meaning and to write for purpose. They're obviously learning to solve problems. Sometimes what they're going to do just doesn't work, and that's okay. It's actually a good thing. They learn from failing. For example, a child the other day was making a necklace for me out of crepe paper ribbon and tape. She came to put it on my head. It stopped at my head and would not go around my neck. Looked at her. She said, "It doesn't fit." No, it doesn't. What are we going to do? She looked at it. She thought for a minute. You could see the wheels turning. I need another piece of paper. So she went and got a piece, and she said, "It's got to be longer." So she cut a longer piece, taped it up, and said, "Let's try it again." She put it over my neck. It fit. The grin on her face, the look of accomplishment, was amazing. And she learned a lot. She learned not to give up. She learned to keep trying. She learned it's okay that it didn't work. We can fix it. We can do something else. She later turned the necklace that didn't fit into a bracelet. They're also learning to help each other. If one child can't figure out how to do something, another child's right there, "Oh, use glue. Oh, here's tape. Try this." They're great at helping each other. They're helping, but they're also building their own self-esteem of, "I helped someone do that," which is an awesome thing to do. They're also learning to create for the pure joy of creating. By allowing them to freely express themselves, we are showing them that we value their thoughts and their ideas, that they are just as important as anything we are telling them, if not more. Their sense of accomplishment and pride that the children have in their creations is amazing to see when they make something themselves and they bring it to you. Ms. Brick, look, look, I did this. Now ask them, "Where do you want...what do you want to do with it?" They may want to put it on our art gallery. They may want to take it home to a parent. They may want to keep working on it. They may want to play with it. As a child who created with a little piece of wood and a Q-tip and some paint, made a nail polish set, and she proceeded after it dried to come around and polish her fingernails very meticulously and was very proud that she had made that set, and took it home to share it with her family and show them. These benefits that I talk...are life skills. We want our children to be able to plan, to create, to take those risks, to solve problems, create things, do great things, be a team player, to have confidence in themselves. Process art is a perfect way to achieve this goal. Finally, I will leave you with the words of my students. I asked them, "Why do you like art?" And in front of you are some of those answers. The answer that I think sums this up rather well is, "'Cause I can make whatever I want to." Thank you. Let me take Rocky.
Thank you, Melissa. And now we have Leonardo. This is Leonardo and his mother Jasmine from Salem Head Start. And the items on this table, Leonardo has created and designed. And I'm hoping that he will tell you some of the things that he has made. Okay, Leo, can you tell us about this first piece?
This is where I eat in my cereal bowl.
Can you tell us what this next piece that she made is?
It's where I play. It's a candy one.
Candy land? What's this next piece, Leo?
This is my piggy...my piggy bank that I put money in.
Where does the money go, Leo?
Inside there. And when you want to take it out, you open the tape.
Can you tell us about this piece?
This is where my fire thing that is made in school.
Fire...fire pit?
It's a fire pit.
And what's inside the box?
Some sticks to get the marshmallows.
And this last piece, Leo, can you tell us what this is?
This is a...this is a chocolate bar. Chocolate bar thing to play with.
And when did you...and who did you give this to?
My mom.
For what day?
For Valentine's Day.
Thank you so much, Leo. Thank you for sharing that with us.
Awesome.
When children are encouraged to practice thinking creatively, it will come naturally to them and their future careers. Through process art, preschool is fulfilling the school division mission. Together, we prepare our students for the future. Through process art, preschool is fulfilling the school division vision, for students to become creative thinkers, problem solvers, and effective communicators. In closing, we hope that we have vividly shared with you the intrinsic value of process art. Process art is a wonder to behold and more complex than we ever realize. Lastly, we invite each of you to visit Leonardo and any of our Head Start classrooms filled with what appear to be trash. There you can plan, create, and evaluate with our community children. Thank you so much.
Ms. Miller, thank you for your presentation. And Leonardo, I'm going to just nickname you DaVinci. Thank you, young man, for your sharing with us your great artwork. Outstanding. Let's everyone give Leonardo a round of applause. I'd like to take a moment to ask if any of the board members would like to make a comment. Ms. Shelley.
I'm going to just move the cheerleader over to the side for just a second. Leonardo, awesome. But this creativity is...it's so nice to see that it's happening in our preschools, and this is...this is instruction. This is...this is the way we need to be instructing our students all the way up, is let them be creative. Let them learn for themselves, and I love seeing this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shelley. Mr. Blaine.
As some of you know, this is my favorite area of education, and it's so critical. Especially this evening, speak to those folks who are at home who either themselves have preschool children or have neighbors that have preschool children. This is a terrific lesson we've all had in what you can do with boys and girls and how critical they are as the most important resource that we have in our society. Thanks so much for the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Blaine. Mr. Twig.
Well, there's nothing about learning that doesn't start early and often, so the earlier the better. Special thanks to all of you Head Starters and Preschoolers. This art's fantastic, especially this fast airplane. That really has my attention as a technical guy. I appreciate that, and appreciate all the creative people and the imagination types and the explorers and the discoverers, the adaptations, the adapters. I've never known a true artist to need perseverance, but most...a lot of other folks do. So I appreciate that side of those kinds of people that are good God made. I would like to know at some point, how soon after Rocky was born, did he get his name?
Almost immediately.
Same day, right?
Same day.
There you go. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Well, again, we want to thank you. And I personally want to thank Ms. Miller. Ever since I've been on the school board, I've been a part of the Head Start Committee. So she broke me in, everybody. And I really appreciate her, and I care for her greatly, and I'm never leaving Head Start. So I'm making a public proclamation on that. Thank you very much. And let's give them another round of applause, everyone. Moving on with recognition and awards, 4.01. Recognition of the school board, Dr. Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Braswell. The Virginia School Boards Association has designated February a School Board Member Appreciation Month. At tonight's meeting, the school board members are being recognized for their hard work and the crucial role they play in our schools and community. Their actions and decisions affect the present and future lives of our children. Board members devote countless hours to help ensure quality education that will lead our students to success. Board members will receive a certificate of recognition from the Virginia School Boards Association. Before I pass these down to our board members by name, we were able to recognize each of them a little bit earlier, and I think gifts have been bestowed upon them as they have been here at the diocese this evening. But I want to share a personal thank you to each of you individually, as a team, for your endless support and the way that you advocate for our students and do that oftentimes through our staff and through the superintendent. It's much appreciated. And I know that when we say countless hours, I think most of the folks that follow this board realize that you're visible, that you're involved, that you are committed, and you don't do it for the money. You do it because you have a passion for children. And I think this is an appropriate time to thank you here in School Board Appreciation Month, but I thank you for the work that you do all year long. So at this time, I'm going to call each board member and pass down to you a certificate of recognition. I thank you to Mr. Bill Blaine. I thank you to Ms. Amanda Blalock. A thank you to Mr. Baron Braswell. Thank you to Ms. Erin Grant. Thank you to Dr. Jim Meyer. And a thank you to Ms. Dawn Shelley. And a thank you to Mr. Kirk Twig. So those out there, please join me in congratulating our school board members.
Dr. Baker, thank you. We're going to move on with 4.02, and I will offer recognition to our clerk and deputy clerk. As a member of the school board, we will tell you that they are our most valuable people. They do a lot of work behind the scenes. A lot of times, when things look good from the public perspective, that's because we have great support behind us, working behind the scenes to make sure that all the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed. And central to that is our clerk of the board. You've heard him on occasion speak with his velvety, smooth voice. Just if it was a few octaves lower, you might think it was Barry White. And we're very appreciative of him. And we want to read the certificate and have everyone join us in showing our appreciation for Dr. Dennis Martin. It says, "Certificate of appreciation in honor of your dedication and hard work for public education through continued service to students. Signed, myself, School Board Chairman." And I want to thank Dr. Martin, and equally as important, his right-hand man or right-hand lady, if you will, Ms. Patricia Bowler. And one thing that you need to know about her, she is a dynamic bowler. We have a great staff, and we're just so appreciative of the work that you do, and we can't say thank you enough. So from this humble board, we thank you for the work that you do for us. Thank you. And let's join us with a round of applause for them.
Stand up, Mrs. Bowler, so that we can recognize you.
Yeah, please stand up, Ms. Bowler. And when we give the instructions for public hearing, just listen to the voice. Moving on to 4.03, National Gingerbread House Competition Winner, Ms. Flannard.
Thank you again, Mr. Braswell. If it's okay with the board, I know that our teachers are eager to take the students' artwork back to their classroom, as I know that Rocky, as well as some others, Ms. Blaylock, you have to put the cat back to Riverview, I think. So if it's... Please feel free to go ahead up and get the students' artwork, please.
That was great. Thank you. The cat goes. Thank you. Yeah, the art was great. Thank you. Thank you.
For the third consecutive year, the Cortland High School German Program won the National Gingerbread House Competition in the teen category in Asheville, North Carolina. This winning streak is unprecedented, and it was recognized in the media in several countries in Europe, as well as right here at home in the United States. Competitive gingerbread house building at the national level does not only require imagination, creativity, and dedication for almost three months, it also has interdisciplinary challenges, including math, technical drawing, physics, chemistry, history, as well as culinary arts. Most importantly, the students' collaborative problem-solving skills are the key to delivering extraordinary results by overcoming big challenges, like the dangerous unseasonal humidity this past winter that we experienced. Despite the many other entries rolling into the season, withstood the 460 miles of transportation to Asheville and back and is still standing strong. It will be showcased at the school division's upcoming Culture à la Carte on March 5. And we would like to recognize the following students, as well as Patina Honinger. We do have with us this evening Julie Peel. Sophie Holmes. Daniel Lewis. Leslie Bates. And I don't believe that Liz Jackson is here with us this evening. Okay, thank you. And if you could also... Ms. Honinger, would you like to come forward also to be recognized?
Ready? One, two, three. One more, just to make sure. One, two.
Congratulations again. Thank you, Mr. Braswell. If we have any family that would like to come up and take a picture, or if you could please stand to be recognized, because we do understand very much the support that it takes from the family in order to make this dream come true. So if we have family that is present, could you please stand?
Thank you, Ms. Flannard. We want to move on to public comments. Dr. Martin, if you would, please read the instructions.
Good evening. The public comment segment of our board meetings is a time to receive recommendations, suggestions, concerns, and comments from the general public. Each speaker is allotted five minutes, and we ask that they clearly state the name, address, and/or voting district for the board. A speaker may request additional time from the board should one's five-minute allotment expire. We ask that you keep your comments focused on the issues and that all speakers maintain a level of decorum and mutual respect for one another. First speaker is Glenn Hollowell.
Good evening. My name is Glenn Hollowell. I live at 8102 Avacet Way in Spotsylvania, in Chancellor's Voting District, I believe. Good evening, board, chairman, Dr. Baker and Dr. Martin. Coming here to speak specifically about middle school sports, specifically sixth graders participating in middle school sports. These kids are having to wait until they're in seventh and eighth grade to participate in sports. They're already doing... Most of these kids are already participating in competitive sports in wrestling, soccer, football, and basketball already. So they're already up to the challenge because they're doing this with their competitive coaches. They're traveling around the country. They're traveling up and down the East Coast. So they're already familiar with participating, practicing, and putting in the extra effort to work at these sports already. We, as a county, are playing catch-up to other areas that are... These kids are already playing, specifically, excuse me, Stafford, Woodbridge, Caroline, Hanover County, Richmond Schools. These kids are already allowed to participate in sixth grade. So our kids, it may not sound like a lot, but it's taken them a while to catch up. So if these kids are allowed to go ahead and start, and then allow them to feel part of the team, part of the school, to embrace it more. The coaches are all in favor of this, for the kids to go ahead and start in sixth grade. It's something the kids want to do. If nothing else, if we could allow the kids to maybe train and participate in what they call the fifth quarter, or the third period, or what they call exhibition matches, this would allow the kids to at least get acclimated with middle school sports, and it wouldn't be such a challenge for them in seventh grade. I know kids, when they're in sixth grade, it's a big change coming from fifth to sixth, and they're like, oh, I don't know what to do. But if they're part of the team, you know, a seventh or eighth grader would take them underneath their wing and let them feel more welcome and bring them onto the team, so it's not such a big gap there. So that's just why I wanted to speak in favor of. And also, just a side note, I do support the school board's budget for this particular year, okay? Thank you.
Jeanne Bergeron and Lynn Slater.
Good evening, chairman, vice chair, board members, Dr. Baker, and community. My name is Jeanne Bergeron, and with me is Lynn Slater, and we're here representing the Spotsylvania Education Association. We're here to recognize Dr. Seuss's birthday and the program Read Across America. The SCA has partnered with the Central Rappahannock Regional Library for at least 15 years that we know of in supporting the program and the children of our county participating in the program. This year, it will be taking place on March 5 from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. And the SCA has brought you a little token of appreciation. I'll do the books. So we recognize and we appreciate that you recognize the importance of making reading fun for our kids. If they're reading and they're having fun with it, well, we know what literacy does for our students. So we hope that maybe you'll have the opportunity to participate on March 5 at Salem Church Library, and we appreciate and thank it, thank you, for your recognition. I'd also like to say happy Board of... or School Board Appreciation Week. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that's all of the speakers that signed up.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a... approach the podium and make a public comment? Is there anyone? With that being said, not seeing anyone, we'll close public comments and begin 5.02, board member comments. I'd like to first start with Ms. Grant, and then go to Ms. Shelley.
Change track a little bit. I do like to thank the SCA for our hats, because God knows, I love hats. And I'd like to also thank some other schools who have provided us with some candy this evening as gifts, and everyone knows I love candy and cookies. And I'd like to thank Cedar Forest Elementary School, Cortland High School, and Spotsie High School for some wonderful emails we got today, Riverbend High School, Riverview Elementary School, and Cortland Elementary School for our appreciation gifts. We definitely appreciate it very much. And to change note again, to back to the budget, I just want to briefly restate, in case you missed my statements the other evening, a brief summary of our budget gap, which I don't know if you have read anything about our budget gap in the recent couple days, but no member of the school board, as far as I'm concerned, is... are willing to support an eight cents increase in taxes. We have a $12.6 million gap, and as we've all stated before, it is not our responsibility to dictate how this gap is to be funded, it is our responsibility to put forth a needs-based budget. And speaking from my two years on the board, a $12.6 million gap represents less than a 5% increase in budget, minus the CIP and debt service. So I don't know about everybody else, but over the last two years, my personal budget, I'm sure, has increased 3% to 5% alone. So I don't think that is unreasonable increase to reflect increases in operating expenses. The $12.6 million gap is a third related to fixed expenses, a third meeting mandated special education needs, as well as a nice compensation increase for our valued employees. Since our whole service is based on our employees, we need to compensate them properly. I looked up on the U.S. Bureau of Statistics site today, and the inflation rate last year officially was 1.3%, and the year before was 1.7%. So over the last two years, according to the government, we've had a 3% rate of inflation. So needless to say, our budget increase in operating expenses is less than 5%. So I think that's pretty fair to be asking for our operating expenses to be covered in this budget year. I would like to ask anybody who would like to support the investment in education on behalf of the county to make sure that you reach out to your supervisors, preferably tonight or tomorrow during the day before they vote on advertised tax rate tomorrow night. Thank you.
Ms. Grant, thank you. Ms. Shelley.
Thank you, Mr. Braswell. Well, once again, I want to thank our clerks, Dr. Martin and Ms. Bowler, for all that support that you give to us. It's sometimes, if it wasn't for you, we couldn't do our job. So thank you very much. Cortland students have already left, but once again, congratulations to them, three years in a row. That is amazing. And just a reminder that graduations will... I know they're still... they're just a few months away, but if you don't have it on your calendar, it's the weekend of June 10th and 11th. Mass Aponics and Spotsy are on the 10th, that's the Friday night, Mass Aponics at 5:30 and Spotsy at 7:30? I'm sorry, 5 o'clock for Mass Aponics. And then on Saturday would be Riverbend at 9:00, Chancellor at noon, and Cortland at 3:00 p.m. on Saturday at the 11th. So if you don't have those on your calendar, you can add those in. And I'm guessing they will be livestreamed again, as they have been the last few years. And then Ms. Grant was... explained the budget, thank you very much. Once again, it is a needs-based budget for our students. The budget is for the students of Spotsylvania County, and that's why we support it. It's for our kids. Tomorrow night at 6 o'clock is the Board of Supervisors meeting at the Holbert Building. They will be voting for their advertised tax rate. The meeting starts at 6 o'clock, and there are public comments at the very beginning of the meeting. If you know... if you would like to... if you can't get ahold of them beforehand, or you would just like to come out and speak, the public comments are at the beginning of the meeting, the billing... I'm sorry, begins at 6 o'clock. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shelley. We'll go with Mr. Blaine, and then Dr. Martin.
You know, when you're in office, public office as we are, elected, we depend very much on input from our constituents, the voters who put us into office. And when we get to budgets such as we're dealing with now, we establish as the first step what's called an advertised budget, a tax rate. And that tax rate, once it's set tomorrow night, is the maximum that can be charged and levied by the Board of Supervisors on April 5 after the public hearing. The challenge is that if it's not set at a level tomorrow night that's adequate to fund our school budget as it has been proposed, it will never happen. And the critical thing, it seems to me anyway, is that people that are in favor of the budget or opposed, as far as that goes, need an opportunity before the supervisors vote on the final budget to make comments. And if the school... if the supervisor set tomorrow night an advertised budget that will adopt or account for our submitted budget $12.5 million gap, people will have an opportunity to be heard, and the supervisors are free when they actually come to vote on April 3rd. They can vote whatever they want. They're not hamstringing themselves at all. But what they are saying to us as voters is, we're interested in hearing what you say before we make a decision. So I again ask the supervisors to please set the budget, the tax... advertised tax budget... tax rate tomorrow night at an amount adequate to cover the proposed budget that we have submitted to them. In addition to that, I'd like to just comment briefly and thank and all the nice things we've got on this terrific day to be recognized. It's a... we forget about that, and it's kind of nice to be recognized occasionally. And I... all these nice gifts and papers from boys and girls in various classes and children's names and all kinds of things, that's why we're here, and I think that's the nicest kind of gift I could have had this evening.
Mr. Blaine, thank you. Dr. Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I'd like to ask our... my fellow board members to please mark on your calendars for March 9, our Northeast Regional Forum at Falkir County High School. The program begins at 5 o'clock, and we have two speakers that have traveled from long and far, two of our own, Renee Daniels and Amber Balaico, will both be speaking to the Assembly there on business partnerships and community engagement strategies. So, we look forward to that presentation, and thank you to Renee Daniels and Amber Balaico for volunteering for that, for this. I look forward to, if anyone is interested and can go, please do, and please contact Marie to get registered. I think the fee is $30. So, and I'll be chairing that meeting and looking forward to as many can be there as we can have represented. Also like to give a special thanks to the, to the preschool art program from Head Start and Process Art. That's the first time I've seen it actually demonstrated in a way that really makes sense, and truly do appreciate that. Also, to our staff for the dinner, and all the forms of recognition, and cards, and gifts that we have received this evening. I also want to give a special thanks, Ms. Gramp, thanks for that summary. I think it was well said and well put. As we tried to say when we met with the supervisors at our budget presentation, it's what I call the perfect storm. VRS is up this year, health is up, composite index is up, and last year, we covered the staff increase. Last year, we took care of the VRS, we took care of the health, and all of that, we had to take from within. It's what I call a Pac-Man syndrome, you just keep gobbling up from yourself. Well, we can't continue to do that. We don't have nowhere to take from, and hence, it is the perfect storm. And interesting enough with the VRS, the portion that is to be borne by the county, is to be borne by the county, because the funds that are coming from the state are being paid by the state for the VRS increase. The health insurance, last year, we were able to cover on our own, this year, we cannot. And it's due to no one else's, but just the actual usage, you know, our claims, and we have to take care of it. The composite index is up, which means the county's share is, the county is supposed to be bearing a greater share of the load. And all we can really do, we're not there to, we're not here to set a tax rate. As Ms. Gramp explained very well, we're here to state our needs, and we have nowhere to take from within, we're going to have to ask of them to help to cover what we have determined as our true needs, our VRS and our health, our debt service, and our staff. And that we need to ask for, and how they do it, we cannot say, we're not trying to convert it into tax rate. All we're saying is, we truly do need the funds. If we do not receive the funds, then we will be sitting at the table to have to make some really hard decisions, because that's going to mean cuts. I don't see any way around it. We're not going to be able to do what we intended to do. And all we're trying to do is no more, no less than what's been laid out in the six-year plan, which is an instruction-based needs plan. That's all we're trying to do. We're trying to do it for the sake of our students and our staff, and for the benefit of our parents, as we saw our young preschool children this evening. What better example of why we're trying to do what we're trying to do? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. Meyer. Mr. Twig, and then Ms. Blalock.
Thank you. I was introduced to Spotsylvania High School this past week, my first official visit in the short six weeks I've been around, and a special thank you to Mr. Davis and staff. I thoroughly enjoyed meeting as many teachers as I could, and just seeing how they're operating, and it's, I certainly look forward to supporting that effort there at the high school. On another note, I am an avid sports enthusiast and supporter of all sports and music in our school system, and that's because both of those build things like character, camaraderie, teamwork, and they accentuate the talents of the individuals. And I deeply admire that, and have even been involved with that many moons ago. And certainly know Mr. Hallow, and everybody involved with that process, with the sixth graders, this chair will do everything possible to support programs just like this. And lastly, to Dr. Baker, in the short six weeks I've been around, it's turned out to be about 21 cents per hour, for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Twig. Ms. Blalock.
Thank you, Mr. Braswell. I want to first thank all the schools that shared with us the gifts. It certainly is a labor of love. I love what I do, and I feel like it's a calling. So, I appreciate the gifts, but, but truly, no thanks were needed at all. I want to thank the speakers, the gentleman who spoke about the sixth grade sports. I know that is on the table with our Athletic Task Force as we speak. So, with your prompting, from your comments this evening, I'll ask for a follow-up and see where we are with that. It certainly isn't the first time we've heard that. So, I will do a pulse check and see where things are in the county, as far as that process goes. And to our representatives from SCA, thank you so much. You are so brave to wear those hats. I will put mine on that day. I am going to stop by, and also, I have committed to read at several of the elementary schools. So, I will make my appointments this week, and I'll take the book you gave us, and the hat as well. I did take Mr. Braswell's, as I have twins at home. I want to talk a little bit about the budget as well. I commend my colleagues for making very poignant statements. Ms. Gramp, I agree with you completely. And I would just piggyback a little bit off what Dr. Meyer said about the local composite index. When it is, when it goes up, we, that means that the localities is expected to give more. Well, it isn't just this year, the local composite index went up, it was the last two years. And if you look at a trend, I actually, after reading the story this morning, I wanted to share and just sort of make sure it was very clear that the school board didn't ask for anything to be raised, or any particular taxes to be put on the community, or the citizens of Spotsylvania County. All we're doing is trying to get a needs-based budget funded, as Dr. Meyer had shared. And if you look at what we have gotten from our localities, and as a reminder, a school board is funded four ways, state, federal, local, and then other being grants, or different things like that. And we do depend highly on, in Spotsylvania County, on our localities, especially with the local composite index over the past few years going up. And so, I pulled some numbers today, and I want to share those with you. In 2013, we received an increase of $481,000, and some odd, 2014, a decrease of the same amount, 2015, 1.5 million, and last year, $17,000 over what is level funding. Even with that being stated, the school board's budget has only, has only been a 6.4 increase for the FY16 budget. What we're asking is not only not unreasonable, it's our due diligence as school board members. So, I would encourage anyone to speak to their supervisor, as was stated before I spoke, preferably by tomorrow, as they will be advertising the tax rate at their meeting tomorrow afternoon at 6 o'clock. So, any support you have, if you support public education, this is your time to speak, and we need your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Blalock. I'll finish with, by offering a few comments. First of all, I want to say how honored I am to be in the midst of such a great school board. And I'm just going to go down the list of the great accomplishments some of these, our school board members that you have, sitting in front of you, have accomplished. Ms. Gramp, in my opinion, is an excellent vice chairman, and she's redefined the way the position is to be performed in the future. She actively lobbies and advocates for the school division, and it's most appreciated by this chairman. Dr. Baker and Ms. Blalock were recognized this past week on Valentine's Day during African-American History Week for their accomplishments in education, which was presented by Senator Kane. We have Dr. Meyer, who is our chairman of the Virginia School Board Association Northeast, I guess, what, region, yeah, Northeast Region. He's our chairman, and serving well in that capacity. Ms. Shelley is the vice chairman for the Special Education Committee for the North, I guess, Northeast Region as well. Mr. Blaine was just selected as chairman for the Governor's School. And both myself and, you know, I am just in awe of the presence of all these school board members, and what they do as a collective body to serve and represent the county citizens of, I mean, the citizens of this county. So, with that being said, I'd like for all of you to join me in a round of applause for this great school board that we have sitting in front of you. There was a discussion about the sixth grade sports, and I believe that, Mr. Wolf informed me that on the next school board meeting on the 14th of March, there will be a presentation with recommendations to the board on how we should proceed with sixth grade sports. So, for your edification, sir, bring folks out next board meeting, and you should have some answers as it pertains to sixth grade sports. And finally, I'd like to finish my comments in terms of the budget. Everyone has discussed dollars and cents, and that's great, but I have always said that the budget is nothing more than a financial expression of what we value. And we value the children of Spotsylvania County, and we believe that the, this budget gap of 12 point X number of dollars, millions of dollars, is not spending, but it's an investment. A lot of times, we get caught in the trap of thinking that when we spend quote-unquote "money" in education, that it's not an investment. But it is an investment, and we expect a rate of return. And we know from the countless numbers of success stories that have occurred through Spotsylvania County schools of children matriculating through our system, that they have been more than valuable in terms of the rate of return coming back to this county, not only in terms of dollars and cents, but great pride. There are so many of them that are serving in the military today. For some of you that don't know, the preponderance of all military officers are, have matriculated through public school systems, and that pertains as well to the military. And those that serve in other capacities of public safety, and the teachers that we have, and a variety of other business titans, they all depend on quality of public education. So, the, the verdict is out. We presented to our funding source what our needs are, and we believe that because it's in line with our vision and our strategic plan, what we determine success to be, that it should be a top priority in terms of funding in this year's budget. So, with that being said, I will close my remarks and turn it over to Dr. Baker for his remarks at 5.03.
Thank you, Mr. Braswell. And ladies and gentlemen of the board, I'm not going to add a whole lot to the many rich comments that have been shared so far. I did want to point out one, in terms of investing in our students. I had the opportunity to go by on Friday along with some other staff members, and I know that I saw Mr. Blaine there as well, the Skills USA region, or district competition, I think it was the district competition, that our folks out at the Career and Technical Center hosted. And I don't know all of the results in terms of the winners, but one of the things I did get to observe was watching our students perform assessments. And in this era of multiple choice and standardization, to watch what our students were presenting were their craft, you know, what they have learned from masonry, to robotics, to electricity and wiring, and they, what was really special about what I got to observe was not only what our students were creating and displaying all the skill that they have developed through their coursework at the Career and Technical Center, but the wonderful feedback that they get to receive from skilled craftsmen who are out in the field, and some of which have already been through our Career and Technical Center in the past. And it was just, it was very inspiring to watch, and that it was, it was not a time of pressure or stress, but you could sense a lot of pride in our students in demonstrating their skill, but also, at the same time that they're demonstrating that they're learning so much from those who are giving them that, that feedback. And so, I wanted to thank IC Cara here tonight, and I want to thank the leaders at the Career and Technical Center for supporting that. And then the last thing, just a very quick update to the school board, we're not doing a formal presentation on this, but I know that it continues to be a topic of interest, perhaps in places like Facebook, I'm not sure, but where we are with the inclement weather in our calendar. And if the school board will recall, a year ago, you approved for us to add additional time at the elementary, middle school levels, which is leveled out when we are tracking, hello, when we are tracking the hours. And so, just to give a very brief synopsis, we currently have still available the hours that are equivalent to just around, or approximately, nine days left. Now, that is if we do not have any other inclement weather. And so, we still have a few more weeks before we're going to feel safe and in the clear, maybe not until our early spring break this year, but I just wanted the board to have that update. So, just a little under nine days, that would be the accumulation of hours that we have in terms of the time that meets the state requirement. So, I wanted to share that as well, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Baker. I'm an eternal optimist. I told you before that Poxitani Phil had it right on the numbers. Moving on to 6.01, board committee reports, any board or committee reports. Okay, we've got Mr. Blaine, and then Ms. Blalock. Let's go ahead, Mr. Blaine, and then Ms. Blalock.
Let me just elaborate just a little bit on some of the things that Dr. Baker mentioned about Skills USA. It was the District 11 Competition that was held on Friday, and about 180 students participated, and representing Stafford, King George, Louisa, Northern Neck, and Prince Williams. And they dealt with both leadership and skills competition. And in April 16th, there's going to be more competition at the Fredericksburg Expo Center. It's been very interesting, I had two very interesting conversations, one with somebody who deals with the A-plus certification. And kids that get an A-plus certification certificate literally are employable at the time that they have that in industry. And the expectation this year, and because of teacher collaboration and leadership at Career and Tech Center over the last three or four years, they hope to have 24 students graduating who will be fully accredited with the A-plus certification, which means that those students will literally be able to leave school and get a job the next day in one of our local businesses. And I had an opportunity to meet two of the judges, actually, are employed by a local business, and where they were talking about the opportunity that those students in that career field are getting. And it's just phenomenal. I could not help but be very, very impressed. There were 20 first-place medals earned by our students, 12 second-place and eight third-place medals. And we cover, just so people at home, if you have children coming up, if you had been able to visit what we visited the other night, you would have been excited to see the involvement and the enthusiasm of the students and the kinds of things they're doing. But we had welding arts, sculpture, TV, pre-produced special effects, related technical and math and radio communications, nail care, power equipment, masonry, heating, ventilation, computer programming, information technology services, commercial baking, advertising, design, promotional flyer development in the printing area, and advertising, job interview experience, extemporaneous speaking, occupational scrapbook demonstrations, posters, and spelling. So, we have a terrific institution, and I'm just really pleased to be able to participate. And we're talking about career development, and you're going to hear a lot about that in the next several years, in general, in what's happening in education. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Blaine, Ms. Blalock, and then Ms. Shelley.
Thank you, Mr. Braswell. Our report, Ms. Shelley may have been, are we doing the same one, the food task force? She and I both sit on the food task force and just had a meeting this past week where discussion was had on new equipment that will be purchased for the kitchens, so I wanted to share that with my fellow board members and the public. We have a fund balance that we'll be using for that, and many of our kitchens are needing some upgrades, and so at this time- And so at this time, Sodexo is looking at the best equipment to buy for that. They also have an event coming up, the Future Chefs. I know myself and some of my colleagues and some of the board members, cabinet, I'm sorry, will be judges on March 18th at Cedar Forest. And these are where fifth graders will actually compete, and they have already made it to that level with their recipes. And I got to say, if you've ever been here, you will feel bad about your cooking skills when these fifth graders can outdo all of us. Pretty impressive, for sure. And the discussion was also had on ways to get our applications out for free and reduced lunch at the beginning of the year. This is something that we feel a lot of people maybe don't realize they would qualify for, and not only helps them in the free and reduced lunch area, it also provides a no charge for the activity fee that we are currently paying. And so we had that discussion as well. But Food Task Force was a great meeting. We'll have another one in the next quarter. We do this once a quarter. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? Hearing none. We'll move on to 7.01, Consent Agenda. Dr. Martin.
On the consent agenda this evening, the approval of the easement to Rappahannock Electric Cooperative for the installation of underground conduit and electrical cables to the county water tank site, minutes of the February 1st and February 8th, 2016 regular meetings, and the February 16th joint work session with the Board of Supervisors and the school board's budget presentation, and donations which are usual and customary. Staff asks that the consent agenda be approved as presented.
So moved, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Dr. Martin. I mean, and Dr. Meyer has moved that we approve the consent agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Shelley, has been properly moved. And seconded, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposes? Hearing none. Carrie 7-0. Action items number 8.01, Adoption of Selected AP Biology Textbooks. Ms. Blalock.
Good evening, Chairman Braswell, members of the board, Dr. Baker and Dr. Martin. Tonight, I stand before you with an AP Biology adoption. Principles of Life is an innovative text emphasizing biology's major concepts and provides students with opportunities to apply those concepts through data analysis and active learning. The updated new edition written for and by AP Biology instructors is designed to support AP Biology teachers using Principles of Life to teach a successful course and prepare their students for the AP exam. The purchase under consideration tonight includes the text, Strive for Five AP Exam Prep Book, e-textbook, exam assessment, exam view assessment suite, access to Launchpad and Learning Curve interactive e-resources, teacher resource flash drive to Principles of Life and professional learning to support the implementation. This evening, it's administration's recommendation that the school board adopt and purchase the Principles of Life text and e-resources as recommended.
We have a motion by Ms. Shelley that we adopt Selected AP Biology Text, and seconded by Ms. Blalock. Any discussion? Mr. Blaine?
I have a question, Ms. Blalock.
Sure.
Are those books also available electronically?
Yes. Every student would have a login.
Are we getting some copies of that?
Yes, sir. It has been our recommendation to buy a book per due to the heavy reading load for AP Bio students and AP students in general. So there will be text and there will be online logins for every student.
Will that be helpful in this reverse classroom thing, the flipped classroom instruction and so on?
Absolutely.
Good. I'm glad to hear that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Twig.
Yes. How many textbooks are we going to purchase for how many students, please?
It would be for all five high schools and depending on enrollment. I don't have the number in front of me. I can get that for you, though. The total cost for the implementation is $33,000.
And that's a set of 15 to 20 per school?
Probably.
Estimated is all I need?
It's actually probably roughly 45.
45 per school?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And are those textbooks exchangeable? Can they be taken home?
Yes. Yes, they can.
Are they, like, signed out? Like, every student doesn't have a book, do they?
We have, every textbook is barcoded. So yes, in this case, for AP coursework, we do assign a book per student, so they check that out to the student.
And what do you do with the old books? I assume you have old books?
Mm-hmm. They are, and they are recycled through Follett. They are our textbook recycler. They either, it costs a lot of money to recycle books with the hardbound cover, and they do that for us free of charge. And then if the books are still usable, if it is current enough for them to use it, they can resell. But typically, they just dispose of them in an environmentally friendly manner.
Okay. And when we, given this replacement, are we replacing books that are torn and worn and five years old? Or what's the criteria for?
The books for AP Bio are over 10 years old, and the College Board, who oversees AP coursework, require a text that's no older than 10 years old. So that's why we're hitting this adoption now.
In order to instruct students, you're not allowed to have a textbook over 10 years old?
Especially, yes. Especially for the sciences, it's most relevant, I think.
And is it possible to keep them under the shelf as additional reference material?
The old books?
Mm-hmm.
I don't see why not. We have that prerogative, surely.
As long as they're not?
Sure.
Shabby and?
Yes.
Okay. Has that ever been considered?
Mm-hmm. We do keep some of our texts as resources.
Like, in this case, you'd keep the 10 or 40 there in good shape?
Sure, as a resource kind of library in the classrooms.
And do we do that for all curriculum? Because I heard a story where we didn't do it in history, but can you speak to that?
I can't speak to that.
Okay.
Not specifically for every.
That might be something we might want to talk about and look into in the future.
Sure. Absolutely.
I'll get with you at another time. Thank you.
Mr. Braswell, may I ask a question?
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Blaine.
Related to the electronic book, it's my understanding that those are purchased and you essentially rent them every year, or you have a fee that goes in every year.
Yes.
But those are automatically being updated on a continual basis.
Correct.
So anybody who's using the electronic book is sure that they always have the most up-to-date.
We get the upgrades.
And everything's out in that field especially, most of it's obsolete in two or three years anyway.
Right.
That's the challenge with this kind of volume. Thank you.
Yes. So the e-resources are bundled in the adoption price for seven years. Most textbook companies do a seven-year cycle. So everything that we purchase is upfront. So this total cost will be the cost for the adoption for seven years out. And those e-resources, as you mentioned, are updated as new information can be added.
Any other questions? Ms. Blalock, you answered my question. Basically, the textbooks are over 10 years old, not giving our students a competitive advantage. The cost is about $3,000 a year for these textbooks to fund all of our students over the next 10 years. I think it's an expense well worth it. So with that being, with that being said, we have a motion on the floor. It was properly seconded. All in favors? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposes? Hearing none. Carrie 7-0.
Thank you.
8.02, Approval of Resolution Supporting Read Across America Day in Spotsylvania County Public Schools. Ms. Flannard.
Good evening again. As you recall from your gifts of your hat, this is an annual process to celebrate Read Across America. So on March 2nd, 2016, Spotsylvania County Public School students are asked to join millions of their peers across the country to celebrate Dr. Seuss's birthday at the 18th Annual Read Across America Day. It is expected that more than 45 million readers will join this celebration. All of our elementary and even some of our secondary schools will be celebrating Dr. Seuss's birthday with reading activities throughout the week. It is administration's recommendation that the school board approves the Read Across America resolution as presented and authorizes the chair to sign accordingly.
I'd like to make the motion for the resolution for Read Across America.
I will second that.
Motion made by Ms. Shelley, seconded by Mr. Blaine. And who's going to be reading the resolution? Do we determine that? Ms. Shelley, Shelley would like to read it? Okay. Ms. Shelley's good. She's going to read that for us.
Thank you.
So we're going to turn it over to Ms. Shelley so she can read that.
Recognizing Read Across America in Spotsylvania County Schools. Whereas Spotsylvania County Public Schools stand firmly committed to promoting reading as the catalyst for our students' future academic success, their preparation for America's jobs of the future, and their ability to compete in a global economy. And whereas, community involvement in the education of our youth grounded in the principle that educational investments is key to the community's well-being and long-term quality of life. And whereas, Read Across America, a national celebration of Dr. Seuss's birthday on March 2nd, promotes reading and adult involvement in the education of our community's children. Now, started, community students. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Spotsylvania County Public School Board calls on the citizens of our county to assure that every child is in a safe place, reading together with a caring adult on the evening of March 2nd, 2016. And be it further resolved that this body endorses Read Across America and recommits our community to engage in programs and activities to make America's children the best readers in the world. Baron P. Braswell, Chairman, Spotsylvania County Public School Board, adopted February 22nd, 2016.
Thank you, Ms. Shelley. We have it, it's been properly moved by Ms. Shelley and seconded. All, we'll do a roll call vote, starting with Ms. Grant.
Grant, aye.
Blaine, aye.
Twig, aye.
Braswell, aye.
Blalock, aye.
Meyer, aye.
Shelley, aye.
Thank you. Carrie 7-0.
Thank you.
8.03, Letter of Intent from Spotsylvania County to Proceed with Constructing a Radio Tower Behind Cedar Forest Elementary to Support Emergency Radio System. Mr. Upco. Thank you, Chairman Braswell, members of the board, Dr. Baker, Dr. White, uh, Dr. Martin, excuse me. Sorry, I had to throw that in there. I can't even imitate that, so, you know. You're in a class by yourself, sir. And in a few minutes, I'd like to invite our maintenance director, Sean Hockaday, to the podium as well. The county administrator is requesting a non-binding letter of intent from the school division to allow the county to proceed with construction of a radio communication tower located behind Cedar Forest Elementary School, which is deemed crucial to sustaining, excuse me, the emergency radio system. The proposed tower site had been previously vetted with various division stakeholders when originally proposed several years ago. The emergency radio system benefits the school division, as each school currently utilizes these radios daily in communication with both the transportation and maintenance departments. In addition, radios allow schools to make contact with the sheriff's department and with public safety in the event of an emergency. These radios are also crucial for efforts by the division's transportation and maintenance departments during inclement weather operations. Consequently, there is no fee to the county for constructing the town, for constructing the tower on the land that is owned by the school division. The tower is a structure, it actually has three guy wires, not two, I mistakenly had written two. I did provide you with a plat of the site. However, the plat really doesn't do a great job of showing you where the tower is in location, in relation to the school itself. So Mr. Hockaday will come up and help explain where we are. And on your monitors should be a PowerPoint presentation that I hope will shed light on specifically where that tower is located in reference to the school and parking lot areas. As you can see, it is in the very back corner of the back field there. And that's probably the best shot there to give you an indication of where it is. It is not, in our opinion, a danger to the students or staff of the school. I had also included information about the structure. In the very rare instance, it may collapse due to some natural disaster. It is designed to break in such a way that it would not hit any of the structures on our property. It would hit the field, but it would not hit any of our building structures or parking lots. So without further ado, I'm going to probably turn things now over to Mr. Hockaday for questions that you might have.
Yes, any questions?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion first to get it on the table. Okay. So a motion by Dr. Meyer and seconded by Ms. Blalock. Any questions, starting with Ms. Grant?
So obviously, this isn't a school project, so there are outside contractors coming to put up the tower.
Yes, ma'am. To my understanding, that we're here tonight to present it to you for approval so the county can move forward. The county will be constructing the tower and using an outside contractor to do so.
And is there going to be any sort of extra, maybe, safety monitoring because of the non-school personnel being on the property?
The other sites we have where they've mounted towers, for example, water tower near Wilderness Elementary, we ask that anything they need to do on that tower to, that it not be done during school hours. We also ask that, of course, they follow any guidelines as far as traffic, speed limits, that sort of thing. If there is a need for them to do extended period of work, we ask that they notify us beforehand. Therefore, we can notify the school. And we try to make arrangements that they do that to where it will not interrupt anything going on at the school, but more so not have the contractors around schoolchildren.
Thank you. And thank you, Dr. Upco.
Just for clarification, what we are, what staff is proposing that you approve would be that the board approve the non-binding letter of intent from the county to proceed with the construction of the telecommunication, telecommunications tower in support of the emergency radio system. Okay. Thank you for the clarification. Ms. Blalock?
Thank you, Mr. Braswell. We appreciate the presentation very nicely done. The aerial view was very helpful. As Ms. Grant and I cover that school, our constituents are in there, I'm very familiar with exactly where it's going to be and obviously support what the county needs to do. Did you mention, is there a safety fence around it, or?
There will be.
There?
There will be a fence constructed around the tower.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Shelley?
Thank you. First, I want to say thank you for removing this from the consent agenda and putting it on action items so that we could ask our questions. And you've said that there's no dangers to our students. There's for, you explained if it falls or it would collapse, I guess, the way that it's being built. So that was one of my first, my main concerns. Why, how did they go about choosing our school location versus another location out in the county? That's a, why did they choose a school versus someplace else?
Actually, this was not the first choice. Several years ago, this idea was brought to our former director of maintenance. And at that time, it was vetted through the principal and some others. There was actually an alternative location that was not on the school grounds anywhere. However, that location, and they were all set to go. However, that location was deemed not able to sustain what was necessary. And so this was the secondary location. It's not typically the practice of the county to want to put towers on school property. The other instance that you recall from a couple of weeks ago was they did put a tower. They're in the process of putting equipment on top of a water tank. That's a little different because that's far removed from the school itself over at Wilderness. But it's not typical to put this on school property, but at the same time, other alternatives were sought, and it just wasn't feasible for it to happen. And quite frankly, we're so reliant on these radios that we wouldn't want to impede the, you know, the upgrade of the system.
Thank you.
Dr. Meyer, and then Mr. Blaine.
Thank you, Mr. Upco, for your last comment, because I wanted to point out, for the sake of the public as well, that what we are, it's mutually acceptable and mutually beneficial for us. Because when we think about it, having a Because when we think about it, having a very good, excellent radio signal is a benefit to the district because of the 350-plus buses that have radios, all of maintenance staff have radios, all of our administrative staff have radios, and it's essential for security and 911 purposes. So it is very mutually beneficial that we have something that's gonna be accessible and serviceable. So I think you've picked a good location. It comes right off of the main road. It does not interfere with anything else. And you've already covered the points for the safety. So, thank you.
Thank you for the clarification, Dr. Meyer. Mr. Blain and then Mr. Twig.
I'm just curious how tall this tower is.
The tower is 375 feet. There's a possibility that it actually wouldn't necessarily have to be that tall. But when they're giving out the specs, they give you the maximum for approval first.
And do you know, once this system is in, will that cover the entire county for the county officers? It will connect 407 square miles?
Well, there's a series of towers that are being constructed. This would cover that area very well.
Yeah, no, I recognize that. I'm just wondering if you happen to know if the system will cover the whole county?
Yes, yes.
The reason I ask that is that just before I got on the board, there was an attempt to look at the Wi-Fi problem. And they wanted to put some transponders or something on towers for various places. And for some reason, it didn't go through. And my thinking is, once they get this in place, if in fact it works properly, that maybe that's an opportunity for us to think about how we reach other parts of the county. Because some of our kids' electronic books, for example, if you don't have Wi-Fi, you can't use them. And that's a major long-range concern that is kind of related to this issue.
It's possible that other vendors could co-locate once the tower is constructed. And that would be more like your Verizons and ATT folks. Different kind of radios, what we're talking about on this particular occasion. But that structure could be used for others as well.
I know that's beyond the scope of this, but that's for general background information. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blain, Mr. Twig.
Thank you. This will be a vital service to our, both our county and our schools. And is of no cost to us. This is the third, to my knowledge, attempt to find an ideal location. And I'm told that this is the last opportunity for one in this area without literally going back to the drawing board. So that's an interesting point of reference as we consider this here. Further, as an environmental, safety, and health engineer and expert, there is virtually no problem with electromagnetic radiation. This thing will be built in sections. We'll have a fence around it, so there's virtually no safety impact on any people or structures. And lastly, I think this would be a darn good opportunity for us to outreach to the county and extend an effort toward contributing to the cause at large. So I support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Twig. We have a motion on the floor that's been properly seconded. We'll start with a roll call vote, starting with Ms. Shelley, working her way down.
Shelley, aye.
Meyer, aye.
Blaylock, aye.
Braswell, aye.
Twig, aye.
Grant, aye.
Motion carries 7-0. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Upaco. Moving to informational items. Ms. Flannard, is it usual and customary? Thank you. 10.01, Any Unfinished Business. Unfinished Business, hearing none. Any New Business, 10.02. Any New Business. Hearing none. Motion to move into closed meeting. Moved by Mr. Blain. Is there a second?
Mr. Chair, please read the, yeah, the items.
Thank you. There'll be resolved that the Board conduct a closed meeting for the following purposes. Consideration of Candidates for Employment, Assignment, Promotion, Demotion, and Discipline of Employees or Resignation of Employees Who Have a Contractual Commitment to the Board as permitted by 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia. We have a motion by Mr. Blain, and it was seconded by Ms. Shelley. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposes? We're now in closed session. Motion, we have it seconded. A motion to re-enter by Dr. Meyer, seconded by Ms. Shelley. All in favor, signify by saying aye? Any opposes? Motion carries 6-0. Ms. Grant is absent. Moving on to 12.02, Certification of Closed Meeting. Whereas the Spotsylvania County School Board has convened a closed meeting on this, yes, I did, 6-0, 6-0-1. Whereas Spotsylvania County School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And whereas, Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this School Board that such a closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the Spotsylvania County School Board hereby certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under this chapter, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting. We have a motion. Mr. Blain, motion to certify, seconded by Ms. Shelley. Roll call vote, starting with Ms. Shelley.
Shelley, aye.
Meyer, aye.
Blaylock, aye.
Braswell, aye.
Twig, aye. Blaine, aye.
Motion carries 6-0 with Ms. Grant absent. Dr. Martin, items from the closed meeting.
Mr. Chairman, pursuant to the decisions from closed session, there have two motions. Motion one is that the School Board accepts the recommendation of the Superintendent for Personnel Appointments, Assignments, Resignations, Retirements, and Terminations as presented in closed meeting and permitted by Section 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia. Second motion is that the Board uphold the Superintendent's decision regarding Personnel Matter Case Number 16001 as permitted in closed meeting and permitted by Section 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia.
So moved, Mr. Chairman, on both items. Thank you. Should we vote on that individually? Or we'll vote on it individually? So we'll have a motion by Dr. Meyer on
Personnel Packet.
Personnel Packet. We have a second? Seconded by Ms. Shelley. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposes? None. So the motion carries 6-0 with Ms. Grant being absent. And a motion for upholding the Superintendent's recommendation. Ms. Shelley makes a recommendation to uphold the Superintendent's recommendation.
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Meyer. Roll call vote, starting with Ms. Shelley.
Shelley, aye.
Meyer, aye.
Blaylock, aye.
Braswell, aye.
Twig, aye. Blaine, aye.
Motion carries 6-0 with Ms. Grant being absent. Motion to adjourn. Moved by Ms. Blaylock. Seconded by Ms. Shelley. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposes? Hearing none. 6-0. Meeting is adjourned at 8:47.